Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 17th Hatfield Select Board meeting. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And as usual, I will read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Is anyone here for public forum? Danielle and Stephanie R., would you approach the microphone? And just introduce yourself, and you know the drill.
Hello, everyone. I'm Danielle Staniszewski. I'm over on Main Street. And I would like to just publicly come forward about the mask mandate that we have for the schools. And then I know we're thinking about looking at for the rest of the town and the municipal To be quite frank, I'm a little frustrated with the situation. And I think that the meeting of the Board of Health was very one-sided, and so I wanted to make sure that I came and stuck up for the rest of the town, who thinks that it should be in the parents' choice as to wearing masks in the building. And that's basically where I'm coming from. And I, you know, I still think we should very strongly recommend them, absolutely, but I don't think that the numbers warrant a mandate. And I'm not sure if it was the right time for the Board of Health to step in on this situation. I think it probably should have been left to the school board. And we weren't given that time to make that decision, so.
Great. So we do have the Board of Health on our agenda later.
Perfect.
And are you able to stay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Good. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Danielle, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Of course.
So did the school committee actually have an opportunity to vote one way or the other on their thoughts?
No. We had a meeting the night before, and only four of our members were there, and it was pretty split in the feelings even amongst the members. We had also received a lot of communication from members of the town, and it was pretty even keel. I would say 60-40 for a mandate, however, there was probably a good four teachers in on those emails, who we also got an email from the HTA. So when you consider that, it was probably actually a higher percentage for a strong recommendation over a mandate.
More from the parents versus the staff?
From the parents, yeah. Yeah, if you pull the staff aside and just count that as one.
Right.
It was definitely more for a strong recommendation.
I can tell you from my own personal, I mean, a lot of people have reached out to me, and none have been in favor of the mandate that I've heard from.
Yeah.
But so, but we do have.
I know, I know. There's both opinions.
Right. I do understand that there's both opinions.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was heard, because it seemed, I wasn't able to make, and I wish I would have just drugged my four kids into that meeting on Thursday, but it didn't seem like it was fairly represented, and so I wanted to make sure that everybody heard, both sides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Danielle, thank you. I'm glad you're sticking around till later.
Yes, yes, we will. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Hi. I'm Stephanie Moynihan, and I live on North Hatfield Road. I'm here basically for what Danielle had said. After I had heard that the Board of Health, you know, said that there was going to be a mandate in the school buildings, I was just very surprised, because they, in the height of the pandemic last year, did not step in, didn't even seem to very frequently give their opinion on what should be going on in the schools. So I was shocked when they, you know, came forth before the school board had even been able to discuss it further or anything like that. So that's about it.
So I have a number of questions for the Board of Health along the same vein. So we will get to that discussion, and I'm glad you're here. Can you stay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? Kathy?
Excuse me.
Hi, I'm Kathy Gao. So I'm just here because of the topic number four, Historical Commission, mostly the discussion of relocating the stored artifacts at Town Hall. I just don't know what the nature of that discussion is. We haven't had any of the committee meetings that were supposed to address that issue, and in fact, weren't notified that this was going to be on the agenda. So anyway, I just, if it, depending upon what the discussion is about, I would like the opportunity perhaps to contribute later on in the meeting.
I would love for you to contribute later on in the meeting, you know, during the discussion. I mean, the discussion is about, I'm looking for it here. It's, there's a draft of a memorandum of agreement between the town of Hatfield and the Historical Society.
Oh, right. So that's the first item, yes.
Yes. So that's where it'll be discussed. Or why is there something else? Did I miss something?
So the discussion of relocating stored artifacts at Town Hall, that's a separate, those are two agenda items? They're two different agenda items?
Yeah, that is another topic for discussion. The Historical Commission Chair has asked to have that discussion with us.
Okay. I would encourage you to hang around for both of them.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Anybody else here for public forum? Paul, did you happen to come for public forum? No? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone online who wanted to speak for public forum? Everybody has their mics off, so I guess I'm going to assume no. In terms of announcements, I have several announcements. You guys mind if I go first?
Of course not.
It's a perk of sitting in the middle.
Absolutely.
So I really want to recognize a few town departments for some things that have happened since our last public meeting. The DPW, you know, we have this big project out on Route 5 and 10. I'm sure everyone's had the pleasure of driving through it, figuring out cones and everything else like I do every day. But, you know, there was a number of water main breaks out there, what, the week before last, Phil? And, you know, I just really want to commend Tony Listowski from the Water Department and Brandon, what's Brandon's last name?
Daniels.
Daniels. You know, they worked really hard, long hours. I mean, there was one day, I think they had three breaks in one day, and I just want to really recognize, you know, the work that they did, because that was quite a lot. And then I would want to recognize Phil and his whole crew for the response to two different storms we had in town, where there was some really widespread damage, and, you know, they came right into town, came back that, there were two different nights, I think. You had to come back for storm-related damage, and that was really great, and I really want to thank them. And of course, in that same vein, thanking police and fire, because there was a number of what could have been pretty serious incidents that were storm-related, and they were on it. So I just want to, I just wanted to take a minute to thank those departments for those two specific things. And then I had an email today from the principal at our school, Chris Buckland, and there's, they're looking, Chris is looking for, the school is looking for, community service opportunities for members of the National Honor Society. I don't know if it's other students as well, but I know it's members of the National Honor Society. And so I know that it's already been shared with a few town departments, and this is more geared towards any departments that might watch the meeting more so than residents. But they are looking for opportunities for students to put in community service hours. So, you know, I immediately thought of maybe something down at the Council on Aging. I don't know about anything with maybe the Fire Department, or I obviously thought about the library and the Historical Commission. So I would just urge town departments, if they had a project that might be good for a student, to help out with, to either be in touch with the school, or they can certainly be in touch with me. And I can put them in touch with Principal Chris Buckland. So I think that's just a really great way to get kids involved with their community. So hopefully, we can come up with a few projects for our very capable Smith Academy students. That was all I had.
That really wasn't very many. I thought you had three pages over there.
No, 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 no.
I'm all set from an announcement perspective. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say, you know, school's starting, so drive carefully out there. So another week the kids will be out, be, watch for the kids, that's all.
Actually, I'm sorry. I do have one thing. I would like to thank Phil and the DPW and the police also. You may have noticed some new crosswalk signage. I had gotten some calls a week or so ago about cars and traffic not slowing down when pedestrians were in the crosswalk. And so I know the Police Department had updated some of the information on their website and on their Facebook page, and then Phil worked with Chief DeKoschak, and we've got some of those barrels. And, you know, we just want people with all the children on bikes, the people crossing the sidewalks. This corner is very difficult, no matter what angle people are coming from, because the stop sign is back. And now there's parked cars near the corner, so people are turning the corner, and there's a crosswalk there. So I guess I would just remind townspeople to slow down and pay attention if there's people in or about to enter the crosswalks. And again, a shout-out to the DPW and the Police Department. That's all I had. Thank you.
Very good. I thought of something else while you were speaking, and now I already forgot what it is.
I'd like to mention, actually, speaking of Council on Aging, they have reopened their center, as we know from the newsletter, and they're offering phenomenal activities and events, and there's going to be some concerts outside here in the park, actually just one this Friday afternoon, I believe.
I thought of what it was. The project is really going, like, great, it looks like, over at Kapewank. I wonder if maybe we could have an update, maybe at our next meeting, from the Housing Authority, on how that's going?
Sure.
Because, you know, it's very visible in town, and, but it looks like they're really doing well.
Burn and I have touched base periodically.
And you bring up a good point. So the Hatfield, the Council on Aging newsletter is just so great. Love that newsletter. And I sit down with it, even though I'm clearly not eligible to, well, I don't know, maybe it's not clear that I'm not eligible to be there, but, you know, I put a few of their events on my calendar, because there's some things I'd like to go to and participate in. You know, even as somebody who's, you know, not eligible to participate, you know, there's still some things that are, you're able to do, and I think it's really great. So Jerry is doing, Jerry and her staff are doing a really great job with that. Anything, Ed, other than the schools?
I think that's good. I mean, yeah, I think you've covered everything so far.
That's my hint, folks, so, okay. All right. So next is the approval of minutes.
Yes, we have a ton, so I'm going to take them in little bunches, I think. I will make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of July 13th, regular session, July 13th, executive session, which was called to order at 8:34 PM. July 16th, executive session minutes, July 16th, regular meeting minutes. I'll just do that patch first, I guess.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of July 28th, the Select Board minute meeting, meeting minutes of August 6th, and the executive session meeting minutes from August 6th.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so finally, we're going to get to our posted business. I'm happy to say we are joined tonight by Chief Flaherty, who is here to introduce our new full-time firefighter. So you guys, I don't know if we can maybe bring another chair up, so there's two at the microphone.
So good evening, everybody. So it's not something that we normally do on the Fire Department, but seeing that this is our first full-time firefighter EMT, our second full-time employee that the town has put in within the Fire Department. Thought it was a good idea for the townspeople and for the three of you to get to meet him. So this is Richard Siliberto. He goes by Ricky. That's his preferred. So he will be working Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. He works 7:30 to 3:30, and then Thursdays, he's actually working 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So he's around for our training nights. That was kind of one of the stipulations that we had. So he is around. He's already proven to be a huge asset in about three and a half weeks that he's been here. He seems to be a little bit of a white cloud, though. He hasn't had a ton of calls while he's been here, but we're getting there.
Chalk block.
He got all of his training done in the first nine days. He got qualified on all of our apparatus, the ambulance and everything. So he came in and we were able to basically putting him right to work. So it's worked out really well so far. He's gotten a couple of projects done that I honestly just don't have the time with doing other administrative functions, so it's working out very well so far. So I thank the townspeople for approving the extra money out of the ambulance, so we can put somebody else on. But, so, he'll be around, so I want everybody to get a chance to see him. So if you see him driving around in the apparatus, people kind of put a name to a face, so forth.
Ricky, we're so glad to have you here. You've come with great qualifications, and I'm really glad we have this opportunity for townspeople to be able to see you and get to know who you are. So I'm really glad you're here, and glad to hear that things are going so well, not surprised at all.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Yep, and I had the pleasure of meeting Ricky, I think, two weeks ago, actually. So it's nice to see you again, and you keep coming back for more, so. That's good for us.
Well, I've enjoyed it so far.
That's great. That's glad to hear it.
Thank you, everybody.
That's great.
You're welcome.
Very happy to have you here. Great that you'll be training with the rest of the department on Thursday nights. It's an excellent idea, great scheduling idea.
He did miss one, but he went on an ambulance call instead, so that worked out.
Ricky, that is what you're here for.
It worked out.
So.
Excuse.
My job.
Very good. Very good. Very happy about that.
Did we need, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, do we need Bob to address the other?
Yeah, I was thinking you were going to address the other.
I figured I was just staying in case there's any questions on the other two items as well.
Yes. Maybe you could just speak to it. So there's a request here from you, Bob, to declare some items surplus property that are no longer compliant, so we can't use them anyway. Maybe you want to explain what will be done with them?
So in the United States, pretty much everything within the fire service follows under a standard. It's National Fire Protection Association. It includes our structural turnout gear. They all have a, basically, an expiration date of 10 years for pretty much everything that we wear. They feel that the material degrades after 10 years regardless of usage or wash. So at this point, some of the gear that is listed there dates into the 2003, 2004, so we are clearly well past the expiration date that's allowed in the United States. Part of my reasoning for this, and I put it in my letter, is that there's a young junior firefighter up out of Covington, and he had made a donation, he knows some folks, they made a donation to Beirut of gear from the Hilltowns. Unfortunately, other countries don't have the same standards that we have to follow in the United States, so they are willing to take any gear in any condition of any age. So I thought this was the perfect opportunity, that, one, it will clear out some of our gear that we can't issue to anybody at this point, and it will also serve a purpose of being able to try to make a donation. And the gentleman actually reached out to me again this morning, just waiting to see, because this will be their second round that's going out. So that was the reason for the declaring surplus. It has no monetary value to the town or to any other town, because it can't be used in the United States, so that's why it went out as a surplus property.
And our gear is, just so people know at home, our gear is continually updated, so that our firefighters are always in compliant gear.
Yes, we've actually gotten to the point, we have, out of the Capitol project from two years ago now, we've been able to buy 11 sets of gear. We've kept the other sets of gear. They are now non-compliant, but they are still in good shape for, so in a pinch, as gear is being washed, if it's a matter of four or five hours, which is usually what it takes us to wash and dry a set of gear, it does give that individual something that they could put on, so we don't put them out of service. It's not the ideal situation, but at $2,200 for a jacket and a pair of pants, I can't expect the townspeople to buy two sets of gear for everybody, but it works for what we have. And then everybody else has compliant gear for their primary set right now.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to declare the following items from the Hatfield Fire Department surplus: eight structural firefighting turnout coats, four structural firefighting turnout pants, and four pairs of structural firefighting boots.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah.
One more, one more item under your, under your list, the paramedic hourly rate?
So I believe this was just a, we got to play catch-up a little bit, when all the rest of the pay raises went in, and the 2.3% went in in the middle of July. It was not on the original list, the paramedic pay rate. No one, none of our employees had received the pay rate since last February of 2020. The individual who was receiving that, he stepped away mostly due to COVID and because of his regular job, so I think it kind of got left off of the master payroll list as we started working on FY '22 rates. And then it got brought up, because now I have a new individual who just got cleared to work as a paramedic for us in the last week, so it will actually affect them. So this would just to bring them in line with all the rest of the positions that got the 2.3, so it was just kind of a cleaning up the books, so to speak, for the rest of the payroll. And it would be 24:07 an hour will be what the rate is for that.
Do we need a motion on that, Marley?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the increases submitted by the Fire Chief for the paramedic position.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief, is that effective July 1?
That would be effective July 1, yes. He only officially became eligible to work as a paramedic as of last Thursday, and he has not responded to a call yet, so it doesn't affect, there will be no retro.
Okay.
Only because he had to get medical clearance from Cooley Dickinson Hospital before he could actually work as a paramedic. And that only happened last week, so. Doesn't affect that.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Bob. Welcome again, Ricky.
Thank you, Ricky, very much.
Nice to see you.
I'll be hanging around for later.
Yeah. Great. Okay, so our next agenda item, which was to be the transfer of a liquor license, has been canceled for now?
Post, yes.
Tabled?
Canceled. We'll hear that at another time.
Okay, and then likewise, we were going to have an update from the Hatfield 350th Committee on the Historic River Crossing, and that item is tabled for now as well. We are just moving right along here. Next, we have a discussion regarding the Historical Commission, and this, we have a draft of a memorandum of agreement, which would cover the collection and our obligations as a town, and the commission's obligations, the society's obligations, and the town's obligations relative to our historical collection. So my first question is, this does not identify a term. There's no, I am not comfortable getting into an agreement that doesn't have some type of terms, at least so that you're putting a set of eyes on it every, whatever it is, two years, three years, five years. I don't know what the appropriate term for this is. I mean, it references the previous agreements of 1992. I don't think we should, let's not do that. Let's be a little bit more on top of these things. And my other question is, has Town Council?
Town Council has reviewed this with the Historical Commission Chair, and so as the previous agreement did not have a term as well, so, and not to say that we can't add a term, maybe revisit it every three years.
I just think it makes sense. Any kind of agreement should be looked at.
Yeah.
And part of what has caused some of these discussions is that everything was so old that we were, you know, and people didn't even remember what agreements were, and so I would like to see a term, maybe that we come to some type of agreement, how many years it makes sense to make sure we take a look back at it.
Well, I think at the very least, it will at least put people's eyes back on it again in a few years, as the parties change, that may be on the different commissions and Select Boards and that type of thing. I mean, and if there's no changes, it's just a quick, you know, pass type thing.
Good idea. And the Historical Commission Chair, Amy Hahn, is joining the meeting, and I don't know if she's joining remote, so I don't know if she's.
Right here.
She's behind Karen.
Oh, she's right here. You're on here. Okay.
I know, it does say you're on here, but she's, and you probably couldn't see her behind you.
Okay, you're in two places.
She's everywhere.
Amy, do you want to come to the microphone? Just, I'm sure you want to participate in this. Can I ask a question? Excessioning, what does that mean?
That means officially getting the items, making them part of the collection.
So it's like a fancy word for acquiring?
Yeah, exactly.
Bringing them up or, yeah.
I didn't have time to Google it today, but that was one of my questions as I read this. Okay. I mean, I don't, I did have some, a few things that I sort of highlighted as I read through this. Under housing securing and ensuring the museum collections, the town will provide adequate space in its buildings for the display and storage of the collection. We're right now providing storage, but it's not necessarily in our buildings. That's been a big topic of discussion.
True, true.
I don't, I think we should say we'll provide the space as we are, because right now, we're providing it in different ways. I just want to make sure we're, we're not making, getting into this agreement, and then it means we have to bring things into our buildings before we're ready to do that. So that was one thing that jumped out at me. So maybe if we were to just remove the phrase "in its buildings," so we would provide adequate space for the display and storage at this point. That's, that was one of my suggestions. I'm assuming we already provide liability insurance, and that will provide access to buildings and collections for the society to carry out its responsibilities, and it talks about normal business hours and that sort of thing. Again, that seems to be part of this other discussion that we haven't really gotten to the bottom of yet, where the collection is going to be and displayed and everything. So this is just sort of things I thought, it warranted some discussion.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, on the last page, it says to deliver periodic updates on the activities of the curators and the accessions committee. Is the accessions committee part of the society or part of the commission?
That is part of, so we've been working on the, oh my goodness, I'm suddenly brain The collections management policy, and that is.
It's referred to in here.
Sort of being decided is part of the collections management policy, which I think we're talking about. We're, you know, looking at probably, you know, a commissioner on the accessions committee, but it needs to be, this is something that's in discussion.
So it's, so it's maybe a society committee, but with the input of a commission member? Is that?
Yes.
Is that right, Kathy? So maybe that could be, because this just refers to the accessions committee, so it should maybe be spelled out who the accessions committee is, and that crossover, that there is a town representative.
There is a description.
Is there?
I think we're, it says the, there's a whole number, I think, that describes the accessions committee. The accessions committee is.
Yes, there we go. Under duties of the society, to deliver periodic updates on the activities of the curators. The accessions committee, a committee which will comprise at least one member of the commission.
Okay, so I did see that, but it just identifies one member. So I guess I would like a little bit, who is the accessions committee? It should be, to me, it should be spelled out more clearly in the agreement. That's all. I think that's pretty easy to probably accomplish and get in here. And new regulations surrounding the museum routine will be discussed first between the And new regulations surrounding the museum routine will be discussed first between the society and the commission before being put into practice. If those are in town buildings, I think that there should also be a discussion with the select board. So that should, I think that that select board should be added.
And I'm sorry, which?
And these are all just, these are my thoughts on this. Ed and Brian will, I'm sure have their own thoughts.
Do you have to review that, or what that line says?
So the, this is in, under duties of the society. It says, any new regulations surrounding the museum routine will be discussed first between the society and the commission before being put into practice. I was just thinking that it should also be the select board, if this is having to do with the museum hours or, I mean, particularly if it's here, I guess is my point, that we should be part of that.
So if there's any change to the museum, like hours, the select board wants to be notified?
I'm thinking, I mean, see, this is why this seems premature to me, because we don't, if you want to be here, if you want to be here.
For two years that we've finally hammered out between two groups.
Pardon?
I'm saying the, this agreement.
Right.
We've been working on between the Hatfield Historical Society and the Hatfield Historical Commission for the last two years, finally got to the point where both of us were comfortable with the language of everything. In fact, it all.
And I understand that, but we, the town still has to be comfortable with it.
I thought the Historical Commission was the town's historical representative.
But wouldn't we have to enter into the agreement? We have to enter into the agreement. This is to be signed by the select board. So any agreements that the town enters into have to come before us. And to me, that's where I'm saying, my first reaction to this was that this was a little premature, because we haven't decided exactly where the collection's going to be. So if the collection is over in the, where the museum currently is housed, no, I don't think we need to have a discussion before you change your hours. If it's here, I think we would want to do that, because you're talking about, this is a town hall also. So that's, that just goes back to my first point, that maybe this is a bit premature.
Well, I feel like maybe we can put, you know, something in that's, you know, any discussions of housing and placement. Part of, we'd like to get this, something into practice soon, because the old agreement is really seriously deficient.
Yeah, no, I would agree.
And I feel like, you know, the decisions as to where the collection's going to be ultimately are sort of an ongoing thing. And, you know, if you like, I think we can write that into this agreement, maybe separately from this changes in museum routine, we can add, you know, that the Board of Selectmen needs to be in on decisions of where, where and how it's stored. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying, and I agree that the old agreement is far too old and that we need to have one. That doesn't mean we should have it before, if we don't know where the collection's going to be. Or maybe it's worded in a way that it doesn't matter where the collection is, but to me, some of the language, I think these are easy fixes. I'm not asking for anything substantial to be changed in terms of the scope or the, you know, the spirit of this agreement. It's just some of, these are all fairly small things, but I think they're worth at least discussion.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just, my one hesitation is sort of waiting until we have, you know, a final decision.
Oh, yeah, so I think we can word this.
Yeah.
In a way that it doesn't need to be, but to me, right now, it's the way that it, there's some wording in here where it matters.
Okay.
So let's just see if we can change that wording. I don't think it's anything drastic.
Yeah, okay.
I was just going to say, it doesn't change the context.
No, not the scope.
For me, it's just a matter of timing, you know. Are we waiting?
Yes.
See this finalize at our next meeting. And I think these are just minor tweaks.
Yeah, and I mean, if you have language you want to suggest, please do.
This is a.
That would be helpful to us.
Yeah, this is a vast improvement.
Yes, oh, yeah.
From the document that's almost 30 years old.
And I do want to recognize clearly the work and thought that went into it. I'm not trying to seem like I'm being nitpicky, but, you know. So what, do you have any sense of maybe what you would look for in a term? Is this something we should look at every few years? I mean, why wouldn't we?
Yeah, no, you're right. And it didn't, because the old one didn't have a term. I don't have a lot of experience with these. I was sort of, you know, working from that. Didn't occur to me, but I think that is a good idea. I would say five, I would like to go at least five years. This was quite the, it was a lot of discussion, and I'd like to not have to do that again for five years.
Well, I mean, I would assume now that it's together, that it's, you know, any kind of updates to it would not be nearly the work you guys have clearly put into it. But I would actually suggest, because we are in the process of thinking about all of this, I like the idea of shorter term agreements until we figure out the final solution for everything. Then we could maybe look. I would say, why can't we peek at it once a year until we figure this out? Kathy?
I would second what Amy says, is that once a year, I mean, just shoot me now, you know. This agreement, I mean, it took a long time to get to. I understand what you're saying. I think adding some kind of a term for review, I think five years would also make sense. The thing is, you know, when there are changes that are big changes, I think they're going to be addressed. Now we have this agreement, you know, it's more recent, we know it's here, something happens, we know we need to change that in the agreement. Then we can need to change it.
Okay.
You know, so, but I think having a requirement that it gets redone every year, when perhaps nothing's really changed.
Maybe a year is a little too tight, because.
I hear what both Amy and Kathy are saying. I'm thinking though, with the new, I think a year might be a little too soon, honestly. Unless maybe it's for the first term, you know, this is new language for everybody, new agreement. So maybe a year from now, we just sit down and say, how's this working out for everybody? Great, let's extend it for another two years, three years, five years. That's all I would.
It also keeps that discussion current about the final destination.
Right.
And the other thing would be not to have any language in here that suggests what is the final destination and the final answer, because in fact, you know, there is no.
It really doesn't. And it's pretty, you know, open-ended in that regard, but.
Yeah.
So those were just my suggestions. I don't know, Marlene, what you think about the things I brought up, or, I mean, we'd have to run it by, well, we would still have to run it by council again, although there's nothing substantive in the changes.
It's not.
Can I just make, just read the very first paragraph?
Yes.
For those people that are at home or aren't directly involved with what we're really discussing. So this is an agreement, the Hatfield Historical Commission is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And the society would be considered, it would be considered an ad hoc group or an independent society. So they're two separate entities. So what this agreement is referring to is, this agreement entered into by and between the town of Hatfield, a municipal corporation with offices, blah, 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 acting by and through its select board and Historical Commission. So the Historical Commission is the town for this agreement, and the Hatfield Historical Society, which is Kathy's group. So that's what this agreement is about. Well.
Well, it's the group Kathy's here representing.
Part of.
And so this really, what the agreement does is it really identifies that it's the town of Hatfield that owns the collection.
Right.
It's the Historical Commission that sort of oversees the fact that the town owns the, but that the society provides.
Society manages it.
That manages it and provides the curator and curates it and everything. So it's, that's what's being spelled out here. So thanks, Brian. I probably should have started, started at the beginning, but I didn't. Okay, so can we just, maybe, Marlene, you could redraft it with those minor changes?
Those changes, we have it in Word.
Yeah, that would be great. I think we have a meeting next week. I was going to send that to post, so if, you know, if you can do it, I think a week from Thursday is our next meeting. If we can have it, great, then we can discuss it at that meeting.
And I think if it makes the society and the commission feel any better, this is just about tweaking, not reinventing the wheel that you've spent so much time and effort on.
I don't want to change the intent, not at all, want to change the intent of this. So, Marlene, if you have any, because I went through that kind of quick, if you need to give me a call tomorrow, we can do that. Okay, and then there's the discussion of relocating stored artifacts to town hall.
I thought I'd stay here for a minute.
Okay.
Kathy wants to speak too.
And, Marlene, how did this get on the agenda? Did you put it on, or did someone request it?
I did put it, well, Kathy and I had had a conversation a few weeks ago, and she was interested in revisiting.
Because Kathy, you mentioned, when you were talking during public comments, that there hasn't been those meetings that we were talking about. So, I mean, there should be, we should make sure that those are happening.
Did I say Kathy? I meant Amy. Amy and I had a conversation several weeks back.
Okay.
And Amy had said she'd like to, you know, revisit that conversation about relocating the items from Benson's.
Yes.
Yes, we very much want to relocate the items from Benson's.
Right.
If we can, you know, upstairs now, it's not being used. I think we have the space. It's just that there, Benson's is just not a good place for them.
So wasn't the issue, though, the climate control up there, and, or is that in place now?
There isn't.
There's no climate control.
There isn't any climate control upstairs.
But what's up there is still better than Benson's. I mean, that's kind of the issue, yeah. And also, it's a matter of access, that because it's packed so tightly, the curator, you know, Kathy, the Historical Society can't really get at the items, even to inspect them to see if they are, you know, if they are being damaged.
I mean, we, back a while back, we did suggest possibly having a second place at Benson's to split it up, but I don't believe you guys like that idea either, right?
Yeah, I mean, Kathy, maybe you can address some of the conditions at Benson's. I take it there's less climate control there than there is here.
We do have it, the town is paying for it in a climate control unit. So, you know, temperature fluctuates, but within a certain level. They are, we're monitoring the temperature in the community there, but the biggest problem, I think, is just that we can't access the collection. We can't get anything, it's been there for two years now. What was supposed to be just six, maybe nine months, you know, during the renovation, which took longer. And so we can't, we can't monitor or check anything. Like, all of the paintings were boxed up in boxes and taped shut, been there for two years. They might be fine, or they might all be damaged, and there's no way for us to check them. And every month that goes by, things could be getting more and more deteriorated. So upstairs, it's probably, you know, a little warmer on some days, because there's not, you know, but the idea would be, you know, at least maybe in the short term, we put an air conditioner and a window or something up there. But overall, that would be, I think, a much better solution than where it is now for the material items that are in Benson's storage.
Actually, shall we switch places for a moment?
And, I mean, all of those, all of those concerns and everything existed before, and it were raised before, and, but there hasn't been the follow-through on the meeting. So who was supposed to be at those meetings? The society, the commission, to talk about?
The discussions that we had, that group, the small group?
The group, yeah.
Yeah, that was. Community preservation, Bob Wagner and Dr. Oslie, Kathy attended those meetings, Amy.
But they, they just didn't, there was no recommendation that came out of there, or it just sort of didn't?
Of course, there was a recommendation, it's just nothing was approved.
But did the recommendation come to us as a form of recommendation?
They had expressed interest in relocating.
Some of the discussion that I was involved with were options, nothing was decided. There was one option of adding on, with the option of adding on to the barn work, and it wasn't liked, was the option of putting in a portable classroom next to the library as a temporary solution, and I don't believe that option was liked. The only option I think everybody seemed to like was the option of possibly finding a house, an old house with a barn, and CPA said that they would actually, could help with something in that case. So, because right now, your collection is at the library, it's at Benson's, it's at the Regional Library, and you also have some stuff in the barn. So, right now, upstairs is not large enough for.
Five colleges.
The five colleges.
Oh, okay.
Right, so we're leasing space.
Yeah, right, that I knew, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that is the long-term solution we're looking at. Right now, I think what I would like to discuss and what the Historical Society's concern is, the short term for those items that are in Benson's storage, because the, you know, acquiring of.
I think, I, if that is upstairs for storage, it also, I think that opens up another conversation, because I think we have to have a really serious conversation of the needs of the town hall and all the other departments that were looking for things. Like, right now, we have a cable TV hopping out of our closet, we have files that are downstairs that are, people are concerned that we have a 100-year flood, will those files be better on the balcony, will we fix that up? We also have concerns of COA needing exercise space, we also have, like this room is filled, a larger meeting room. So, I mean, and right now, we can't use the space until the bathroom is actually fixed up, and that would have to be appropriated.
That's for museum space, but not for storage?
Right.
Right.
Right, for storage. So if, if we do bring the collection back here just for storage, then it has to only be temporary until we actually have a discussion on what the needs are of the town hall, and how do we want to go forward. So, I mean, we, we did move the collection out to secure it in different locations, because Regional Library was a, is a controlled area, Benson's was a controlled environment, and, I mean, I, that's, if we're going to go back to storing things up there, then it has to be with the agreement that it, that can only be a temporary solution.
And only storage.
Until we decide.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about putting it up there, and then all of a sudden, that's, that space belongs to the.
Any comments?
Yeah.
So, Ed and Diana, I mean, you're saying we have to be concerned about that space becoming, you know, it should only be temporary storage. That space was agreed to be the permanent storage of the museum before, and the CPA funds that were put forward of $125,000 from a CPA project was, was given to the town from CPA because the museum was supposed to be moving up there, and because that storage space.
We know all of that.
Has been the museum space for storage since about 2010. So the only time since that that space has not been, you know, we had to move out of the building for the renovation, and then it was like a bait and switch. Like, now that the renovation is done and the space is nice, now it's no longer space that's available to the, to the museum. This is the town's collection that is now inaccessible. While in a safe-ish place, we can't monitor anything, and we can't access the collection. So how is that taking, you know, good care of the town's collection?
Can I just back up a second? I mean, we did find out if that space is used, the bathroom has to be handicap accessible. And I believe it was you that mentioned that you wanted that area as an office or a space to do stuff, right? And that area would not, no longer be there.
Right, until we learned that it had to have a handicap accessible.
It was also mentioned that originally, when that space was for storage, it was because it could not be used, because we didn't have an elevator. And, and that place was used for storage, but we have to be concerned. I understand the importance of the collection, I understand your needs, but we have to be concerned with everybody else's needs too. We can't, we have to look at the whole picture here.
I've talked to Jerry, if they're interested in having exercise space upstairs, and she said no.
That's fine, but anyways, in order to use that space, if it's public access, the bathroom has to be redone, and your collection needs some kind of environment, environmental controls. Originally, the plans that were provided stated that the balcony would have to be secured and flattened, you'd have to have an HVAC system. I mean, all this costs money if that's what you want. But your collection is so large right now, if you put stuff up there, you still need other places to store the other stuff, correct? I mean, you already have the library, if you take upstairs, you're still going to need another storage area, or will you not? I mean, your collection has grown big, it's gotten bigger. I mean, I commend you guys for the idea of, if you can find a house with a barn, that would be large enough, but.
We're not actually, think that that's the best idea for the museum, so that's, you know, a discussion for another day. But, but Ed, I think what we're discussing here today, as Amy was saying, is there's a lot of issues that the town needs to revisit, because these decisions were made before, but now they're deciding that that's not a, that's not the way the town wants to go. But in the meantime, the museum still needs storage. I mean, every museum collection needs storage. And so we had storage on the second floor of the town hall, and we would like to get it back so that we can access the town's collection, share it, use it at exhibits, monitor it, which needs to be done on an ongoing basis. So, you know, at the moment, we're asking, as the commission, I believe, is recommending as well, that the, that the collection that's jammed into the Benson's storage unit can come back to the second floor, like the north community room of the town hall. There are collections item up in the balcony now that never left, because they were, you know, kind of too big to move. And that, you know, space could be used for some lighter things, so there wouldn't be a requirement for, you know, adding stuff to, you know, the framework of the floor. So. So, even if we had the North Community Room and the balcony back, we could move all of the stuff back from Benson's and potentially even fit the items that have been offered by Smith College of the Sophia Smith Furniture, because that's furniture that the Commission and the Society both feel like it would be, you know, important for the town of Hatfield to be able to accept. But, you know, we need to have a place for them. If we had the North Community Room and the balcony room, probably those two spaces would be enough to handle that and to safely store those items, and then they could be accessible. And then, you know, we continue to have discussions about, you know, what's the best, you know, end place for the historical museum.
I, I think we were right in talking about having the meetings, resuming the meetings that we were having before and making this a separate discussion. In the short term, you know, my goal is to find a suitable short-term solution for the stuff that's in Benson's. I will, again, we are meeting next week. I mean, I am open, but it just needs to be more suitable than the situation that we have now. I mean, I think we can talk about various solutions. I, I don't know that there's one single solution, but I think, again, this is for another meeting.
Yeah, I mean, this is on as just a discussion. I did not come tonight thinking we were making any kind of decisions on this.
No, nor did I.
So, I guess I would, I would like to defer a decision on it. And I will say that one of my concerns is that if we bring the, the collection back here temporarily, that it's not going to be viewed as temporary, and that it's going to be like our space, you know, and, and it's even referred to that sort of now, because it was the space for a while, and, and it is part of this much larger discussion.
It's, it's a big discussion.
It is a really big discussion, and there's some big dollar amounts...
We need a meeting to have a discussion on it.
Attached to it, so...
Yeah, and not, like I said, I am not looking at that long-term right now. I'm looking at short-term, and I think, again, maybe the smaller meetings is a better place to take that up. So, maybe we can take those up again.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this, Brian?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's not an easy...
It's not a quick answer.
It's not a quick...
An easy solution.
It's not. There's a lot of sort of important pieces to it. But I do want you to know that we do, you know, take seriously the protection of the collection.
Right.
Mr. Raff, you're next on the agenda. I'm good. Did you want to come forward and introduce yourself and let townspeople know what you're doing here today?
Yeah, hi, my name's Steve Raff. I live on Elm Street with my darling wife, Deborah.
Hi, Deborah.
We're both members of the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry, and we're looking to host an event here in Hatfield, where the 15th Massachusetts would be here to create a, a living history for the townspeople of Hatfield, primarily for the Council of Aging. I'm requesting permission to utilize Smith Academy Green or Common next door, or, but here, to put up some tents and have about 15 to 20 reenactors, or living historians, as we like to call ourselves, give a taste of what 1862 was like for a lot of boys that came from towns like Hatfield.
Sounds fun.
We hope it's going to be...
Do you really, are you really going to use musketry?
Yes.
In the town center?
Yes. I've already talked with the Chief of Police.
Okay.
I've already talked with the Fire Department.
Okay.
I've already talked with the DPW. I've also contacted Digsafe, because our tents require tent spikes.
Okay.
To, and I want to make sure that we don't, we, we love to leave the property the way we find it when we do a reenactment.
Please do, yeah.
I want to make sure we leave the property the way we find it.
Okay. And you're going to wear the wool on August 27th?
We sure do, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We wore the wool just a couple, well, last weekend.
Good, great.
In Hudson, Mass. So, we, we've grown accustomed to wearing wool in July. The boys did it in '63 at Gettysburg. I think we can do it.
Okay. I think it sounds fun.
It's going to be a lot of fun. Be educational, please, if you're around...
You know what's too bad is, well, the kids will be in school already, but they get out at 2:30, which is the halfway mark.
Well, on their way home.
So, for townspeople, this is Friday, August 27th, from 12:30 to 4:30.
4:30.
Is when you'll be set up here.
Correct.
So, so schoolchildren getting out of either of the schools at 2:00 or 2:30 could swing by.
Take their mask off and come learn about the Civil War.
Most assuredly.
Or we can contact the school and have the teachers bring them down.
Okay.
That'd be fun, too.
Outdoor.
It's only the second day of school, so that might be a...
They'll be tired by then.
So, really great. And I think, I think you're right. I think that folks from the Council on Aging will love this. It's right across the street from Kappa Wog.
Getting very positive response from, from all of my friends.
Where will this be publicized? Will this be up on, like, Facebook or anything?
It will be on Facebook. It has been on Facebook. It's on the community calendar here in Hatfield.
Okay. Maybe we could get it shared on the town Facebook?
The town website.
I can send you whatever copy you might need, or you happen to have one right in your hands, outstanding, Brian.
We have.
Yeah, that's got to schedule what we'd probably like to try to accomplish. And it's going to be, it's going to be an interactive-type event, where we're going to hopefully get some townspeople dressed up in some wool and get them firing some muskets and all that kind of stuff, so...
Brian will do it.
Yeah. I got a co-picking up, Brian. So, that's, that's basically our intent. And then we're going to have some music at the end.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
It should be, it should be a fun day, but we just need your permission to...
Great.
Bring Canvas and put it up.
Well, I'll certainly make a motion to approve the Civil War Living History on the Hatfield Common on Friday, August 27th, featuring the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry from 12:30 PM to 4:30 PM. I'm assuming you need time before then to set up, but, you know, that's the hours of the...
I'll second that. I think this is fantastic. Thank you for coming to Hatfield to...
This is right up Ed's alley.
To show this off. And I think it's, it'd be great for the town and for the town of Hatfield, so I second that.
Could I just make one suggestion? Some people refer to the Common further up Main Street this way as, as the Common.
Oh.
And we are talking about Smith Academy Park here. And, and I notice it said the Common, and I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, I would definitely call it Smith Academy Park.
Yeah.
Yep, on your, on your...
I can change the verbiage.
Now, will there be any kind of maybe community call, Bob? Letting people know this will be going on? Particularly, there's going to be volleys and that sort of thing, so maybe we should have a call?
We can just either put in the request, what you want for, like...
I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think a robocall sounded like a good...
Yeah. I think particularly because of the volleys and that sort of thing, it makes sense to me.
It, it does get a little noisy.
Mm.
I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have probably 15 muskets going off at the same time, so...
Wow. I would do a robocall. Let's do a robocall on that.
Well, I, I think it's important, because people who aren't seeing this or aren't familiar with it will, in fact, hear gunshots.
Yes.
And so, you know, we want to make sure that they have as much...
Exactly. It's hard to believe, but some people don't watch these, so we should probably get the call out some other way.
We don't miss a single one.
Really?
Yeah.
You know, I, people approach me all the time about how they see things on these meetings, so I think it's great that people watch it. Great, did you want to mention your September 22 adventure?
Can I?
Yes.
As a friend of Hatfield's Council on Aging, we're putting on a wine tasting. It's called the Perfect Pairing. And what we're going to be doing is, we're going to have a wine tasting event up at Black Birch Winery on September 22nd, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Tickets are available either by contacting the Council of Aging at 247-9003, and speak with Cookie or Jerry, or you can email me at friendsofhatfield@gmail.com. And I, just give me contact information, and I'll see that the tickets get to you. The tickets are $20 apiece, and for that, you get five different selections of wine, you get five different types of cheeses, and five different types of petite cupcakes to kind of pair them with.
I bought my tickets before I even knew all of that.
You would have paid 30 bucks for them.
Yeah, exactly.
We didn't, we didn't make, we made a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to backtrack. We made a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. But it's on the 22nd, and there's going to be great raffle prizes. The people of Hatfield and businesses around are being very generous, so I'm very...
And the proceeds go to support the Council on Aging.
The Council on Aging.
The Friends of the Council on Aging.
Jerry's doing a wonderful job.
She sure is.
Yeah.
She sure is. Okay, great.
Little things that can, kind of help things out a little bit. Do more things for the, for the seniors here in town.
Is there a finite number of tickets?
Uh...
Could you sell out?
Well, right now, we're looking at 200, of which...
Oh, okay. You'll be fine.
We've got, we're selling them pretty, pretty, pretty good, to be honest with you. I was, I was a little apprehensive, but people are taking to it real well. Deb sold 19 tickets already.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's on fire.
Yep.
So, it's, it's, 200, I think, is, is a lofty goal. I was kind of hoping if we could get to 120, I'd be a happy, happy camper. But I, I think we're going to, we're pretty close to being at 120 right now, so...
Excellent. Great. Very good. Well, thanks for that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Did you want to do that?
I can do it under rule of business.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay, we are moving right along here. We have a couple of quick appointments. So we have a, an appointment here for Bob Flaherty to be, to be on the Recreation Commission.
Right, but we have determined, confirmed that, that is, there is not an available seat on that committee.
Which is a bummer, Bob, because I think you would have been really great on there.
I'm sure they would accept volunteers, though, even if it's not an official member.
You, you know, for years, we couldn't get anybody on there. Now we have too many people, so that's great.
Mm.
Well, we're going to chalk that up to the other people on the committee, Danielle. I said, we couldn't get people on that committee. Now we have, yeah. So, Bob, can we, can we put you on the back burner, and then when there's an opening, get you on there?
Let you know.
Sure.
Yeah. But thanks for stepping up to do it. I'm sorry that there's, we're not able to.
That was, yeah.
So then we have Community Preservation, an appointment of Paul Dostal, which I think is terrific, absolutely terrific.
Mm-hmm.
Paul, did he just leave?
He just left.
Oh, before he gets appointed? Oh, okay. I thought maybe that's why he was here.
I'll make a motion to appoint, he was here. I don't want people to think I'm doing it because he's not here. I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Dostal to the, sorry, the Community Preservation, CPA to the Community Preservation.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I do have, I'm just looking at the, oh, there's Lydia. It's all zeros on here. It's the number of year. Go ahead.
Because the CPC doesn't, CPC doesn't have any terms.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
But those are, those are the board reps, so Paul Dostal's being appointed as the Planning Board Rep to the CPC.
Okay, yeah, because Stephanie's going over to the...
Right, and then, who's, who's the other one besides Dostal? Who's the next?
Stephanie Slish is going to the Pioneer Valley Planning.
Yes.
So they're just dividing up their duties as Planning Board members.
Right, so it's, it's not a straight appointment to the CPC.
Got it. I'll read, I'll read, thank you for running down the hall.
Yeah. I was, I was watching it on the TV in the morning.
I heard you coming. All right.
Okay.
All right.
So, so that was the discussion. All those in, now you're good?
Well, so, well, I'm going to, I'm going to fix my motion, having the town clerk, having come in here. So I'd like to motion read that we will appoint Paul Dostal as the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation.
Okay.
Commission. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to appoint Stephanie Slish.
Planning Board.
To, as the Planning Board Representative to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for a one-year term, it looks like, on this one.
Yeah.
The remainder of a term, so...
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phil, CPW report.
Thanks, Lydia.
Thank you.
So the personnel changes we're going to table?
Yeah.
Okay. The fuel tank bids.
Okay.
Laurie?
We opened the bids for the fuel tank replacement project, and they ranged from $270,000 to $92,000. So obviously, the red flag went up, because that's too much of a swing.
Yes, it did.
So we reached out to the low bidder. I reached out to the low bidder to have a discussion with him about exactly what he was going to provide, and he really didn't have an answer that would satisfy me. So I'm suggesting we reject all the bids and put it out to bid with some alternates there, because the high bid was right on the mark of what we were looking for with everything included. But there's a couple of things we can take out and use them as alternate, so I think that's what we should do in the best interest.
Okay. And we can do that in a timely manner? I mean, is the plan to get these, this project done before winter, or is that not possible?
I think they could even do it during the winter.
Oh.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to state, so these are the fuel tanks that are at the highway garage. I, I just, for people that are wondering...
That provide fuel to every town vehicle.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say that...
No, I understand that. I just wanted, all we talked about was the, the underground tanks. I just wanted people to understand where, where the location is.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should rebid it.
We don't need to make a motion to do that, we can just...
Do we need to make a motion to reject all bids?
Reject all bids?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I will make a motion to reject all the bids previously received and rebid the project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carryover vacation time. We have a request from Phil to carry over some vacation time into this current fiscal year. Did you want to speak to that?
No, you have my proposal in front of you that was requested back in June, so.
On June 1st, and it states, "Due to the workload, it will not be possible for me to use my vacation time from now to the end of the fiscal year." Major projects on Route 5. When is your plan to use it?
I'm going, Friday, I'm leaving.
Okay. And how, and you'll be, how much of it will be using?
Does that soon enough, or do you want me to leave Wednesday?
And you'll be using all of it in that?
No, I'll be using a week, then I'm coming home, then I'll take another. I'm going to, I usually take fall, then the fall off, so. I'll be using more weeks during the fall.
So can we just make sure that it's used by maybe?
Sure, absolutely.
Can we say the end of October?
Sure.
Will you use it by the end of October?
Absolutely.
Because I'm not a fan of carryovers like this. You know, there's the normal amount that can be carried over, but the extra carries over. So I would, carries, yeah, carries over. So I would, I would not want to do this again next year, is my point.
Okay, you got it.
So.
Yeah, the project, the amount of projects we've had going on in town, I get it. And Garrett's been on vacation.
Well, and there's been a lot of personnel on vacation, because.
We get it, so.
Everything got backed up.
I have no problem, I don't know if you need a motion to approve this, but if so, that, I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion, but you got to use it up, and next year, I will not approve it if you don't use your time up. Actually, at UMass, if you don't use your time up, it turns into sick time. I mean, that's, maybe that's.
I would just use your vacation time.
Use it or lose it.
And, you know, and the point is, if you put it off that far, and then you have things like this, then you get into this bind. So take it. I think the town has really generous time off policies, so people should be taking them, you know, incrementally, so that they don't get backed up like this. So, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Marlene.
Enjoy your vacation, Phil.
We only have, I know people are here for the Board of Health discussion. We are very close, very, very close. Some things took longer than I expected tonight. And this was with tabling some of our biggest discussions. We would have been here until the wee hours. Okay, so, Marlene.
I have been contacted by Michael Norton. He represents the, represents Competitive Edge Racing. And they are planning ahead for an event in April of next year. And they have been in contact with the police department, and they're requesting to have the event, bike race. This is a race event, to take place in Hatfield. And in the letter, which is in your packet, he explains the route, which they will be taking for that event. And just ask for the board's permission to hold that, for Competitive Edge Racing, to hold this bike race event in April.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on this.
I did too.
I mean, the race starts in Hatfield. It goes through Whately, and then comes back on River Road. So have they been in contact with Whately? Because we, we only have jurisdiction over Hatfield. We don't have any jurisdiction over Whately.
Oh, right, of course, of course. I don't know if they have been in touch with, with Whately, but I can certainly find out.
And we don't, what we don't have is feedback from Chief DeKoschak on if he approves this. I mean, it says he's been in contact with him. That doesn't mean that the chief doesn't have concerns, or, so.
Based on my conversation with Mr. Norton, there weren't any concerns, but I will follow up with Chief DeKoschak.
Right.
Conversation with the chief to make sure. So that was what I was thinking about. Does this have anything to do with the little arrows that are all over the roads in Hatfield? Has anybody seen those, the little arrows? Oh, okay. It was, I didn't, I didn't know there was one yesterday. I, I didn't know about it. I saw the little, there was arrows on my street, and I, I wasn't sure what they were.
That was Hatfield, Whately, Conway, back again.
If I may, regarding this one, Madam Chair, I don't, other than what Ed and Diana both brought up, I, I don't have a problem supporting it. Marlene, if you need to get back to Michael, but we certainly need some of those questions answered.
And he probably wants to do.
It's almost like he's so far in advance, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, he needs to do a lot of probably promotion and all of that sort of thing for this. So I want to be respectful of, you know, his needs, but.
Absolutely.
It's not enough to just tell me you contacted the chief. I'd like to know what our chief thinks.
Right.
Okay, voting to remain one precinct.
So this is a requirement with regards to the census, and the town clerk. In the past, the town has always voted just the one precinct, and we do have one precinct.
Oh, we have three zip codes.
This is true. I don't understand that, but.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah.
All right, I will make a, I will make a motion, as is our duty, I guess, yearly, you said, Marlene?
Yes, this, every 10 years.
Oh, every 10 years. Oh, census, with the census.
Every 10 years, this is voted.
So I will make a motion that the town of Hatfield remain a one precinct town.
A second.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And here she is.
Can I make one comment before you zip into the next part?
Yeah.
And it's, what's in the back of our packet, oftentimes, we just get some FYIs.
Yes.
From Marlene. And I thought it was important to recognize, in this case, Marlene, who received a letter from Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito for all her hard work that she's done on the Community Compact over the last few years. A couple of years ago, actually Jeff Boyle and Pac On were on the Select Board with me at the time. But Lieutenant Governor Polito was here and actually made the presentation to the town of the accounting services that we've begun using since that time. And Marlene has been instrumental in providing the information. So this letter from the Lieutenant Governor went to Marlene on behalf of the town, so I just wanted to acknowledge Marlene.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that and everything, Marlene.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And then lastly, for me, on, off-topic, where we also received a letter, Jerry received a letter on behalf of the Hatfield Senior Center friends from Lindsay Sabadosa congratulating them on the renovations downstairs, so.
And a letter from Sheriff Kaling that we will no longer be charged to use the regional lockup.
Yes.
Which is.
We have been paying that, oh, God, for forever.
That's, that was really great, so. Okay, so we are finally.
Just before you move on to the Board of Health, one more thing I just wanted to bring up, and not a very lengthy discussion at all. Updating the town's master plan.
Oh, yeah.
So my goal was to start having discussions about that this summer, and maybe bring in the Planning Board and start thinking about putting a committee together. It's long overdue.
I nominate Darrell.
Yeah, Darrell was on that committee.
He was very good on that. He's, he'll be so mad at me. But yeah, no, that.
I think that was underway when we first moved to town 20 years ago, right?
It was a huge undertaking, and Darrell, they did a really good job. But yeah, it is time to do it, and, yeah, we should think about that, so.
Okay.
Great. Those need to be signed. Oh, no, wait a minute. These are just for the chair. Oh, no, this one needs to be signed. That's it, Marlene?
Yes.
Okay, so finally, finally, we're going to get to the discussion of the board, with the Board of Health regarding mask mandates for municipal buildings. So Bob and Liz, did you guys want to grab a couple, maybe bring another chair up? That needs to be signed, Marlene.
Yep.
The agenda item is Board of Health regarding mask mandates for municipal buildings. There, you know, municipal buildings can be construed as the Town Hall, the DPW building. Separate from that are the schools. And we had our last Board of Health meeting on Thursday, I'm sorry, was it Tuesday? Was it Thursday?
Thursday.
I know.
It was late last week.
And unfortunately, it was the day after the school board had their meeting. So we were kind of getting some of the feedback on their discussion a day later. And I think Danielle mentioned that there was kind of a mixed opinion on masking and some of the other requirements or suggestions. We, I'm happy to see that we had a great turnout from a variety of school factions. We had the school nurse, the new superintendent, one of the teacher representatives, the school board members. So it seemed like it was a good, across-the-board representation of folks from the school. We discussed the various levels of mask mandates, whether we were going to have it or not. And we decided that we would not make any decisions on general mask mandates as far as town businesses, other buildings. We did bring up the issue of safety in the Town Hall. And fortunately, we had Marlene there to, you know, give some input. But we discussed levels of risk for the employees here in the Town Hall. But we did not make a decision on either commercial masking or Town Hall. And that's to be considered, depending on how things are going, and how, we will discuss that further at a subsequent meeting. We did feel that because school is starting in less than a week or so, that it was important that we make some decision, or at least a recommendation, on school masking and school safety. And again, masking is only one mitigation issue related to safety in the schools. I was very pleased that, since we had such a diverse group from the schools, all of them were in favor of keeping an open communication with the Board of Health, so that it makes the communication easier. If there are questions from any of the factions on the school, that we could get that communication and be able to communicate back and not have five or six different factions asking the same question, sometimes expecting a different answer. Last year, it was very confusing, very difficult to communicate, because there were so many varying factions. We're hoping to keep that mean of exchange a lot clearer and more open. As far as the actual discussion, everybody was kind of encouraged to give their opinion on what they felt. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of masking. I think the major concern was safety. And safety for the teachers, safety for the students, and staff.
In addition, I also received several emails from parents and school-aged children and stuff promoting masking that we have to.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind.
Did you receive, there was also communications that were sent that were people speaking, asking for there not to be mandates. Did you receive those as well?
Correct, yes. Yep. And again, we have to take into account what other jurisdictions are doing, what's happening. I know we don't, I know we don't, but as a.
Well, but you just said we have to, but we don't have to.
No, we don't have to, correct. And, you know, the important thing is, you know, the goal is safety for the staff and students.
I think we looked at the science of things, because, you know, this new variant, you know, is running more towards kids. And, you know, here we're coming off a summer, and now we're going into a situation where they're unvaccinated, and their main protection is that mask. And, you know, yeah, kids have been running around all summer, but they haven't been inside a classroom five days a week from 9:00 to 2:00, or whatever the hours are. So, you know, we don't really know what to expect, but we felt it necessary to protect the kids as best as we can, because they are not vaccinated.
So, go ahead.
I was just going, and I can appreciate that, Liz, and Bob, I mean, you know I was part of that committee for a year and a half. Do we have an idea of how many COVID cases there have been in Hatfield over the last week, or two, or three?
None, none this week.
So there's no COVID cases?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so that is part of the science. They say that hotspots are the places that should mandate masks. Probably be a good idea for everyone to at least offer, or, you know, leave it up to the parents or the adults, teachers to wear. So there's been no COVID cases in Hatfield.
This past week, there were, the week before.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, I tried to do a little research. I tried to do a re.
We were at the height of this.
I tried to do a little research before I came to, well, I mean, all along, but, and I get the position you're in. I, I, trust me, I do. But I also think that personally, I, and I don't know if you guys were here. I asked one of the school community members, had the school committee taken a vote on this, one way or the other, and the answer was no. So for me, I think this, while the Board of Health certainly has a, an important piece of this puzzle, right, of the COVID puzzle, I think the school board should be the ones deciding what, as a school, for our district, what are 450 students going to school here? That we should hear from, we should hear from them, whether it's pro or con, or whatever. I mean, residents need to know what their school committee is voting for, for all, for everything that the school committee votes for. I mean, I did it for 18 years, right? So I, I know that people want to know how the people they elect, same as us. We're on TV all the time, though, so people get to see it. I guess my only, it's not really a concern, I guess my comment would be, if we're following the science, which is what you said, then the science says if it's a high infection zone, right? We're doing this two weeks ahead of time. I mean, I think I would have personally felt a little more comfortable if it got closer to school, and then you said, well, you know what, we just had five cases yesterday, you know? Something that drove it a little bit more, and rather than make it mandatory, make it voluntary. So that's my opinion on it. I'm not second guessing you guys, but you're here, so I thought I would offer my opinion.
So I am second guessing you guys. I want to, I think Danielle raised an excellent point at the beginning of this, that quite frankly, for the first 18 months of this, the Board of Health has really taken a backseat, even despite being asked at times to have more active role. And so all of the sudden now, we have this decision. I'm curious why this was even on your agenda. In other words, who brought this to the agenda? Was it, who was it?
I'm not sure who, any individual brought it up, or if we all just thought it was important. We also, we also had requests from the school, the administrator, from the school nurse.
So my concern is that this was an effort.
That's where that request came from.
So, but my concern is that this was an effort to usurp the school committee.
No, it is.
Because the school committee clearly was going to make a different decision. So suddenly now, you have the Board of Health stepping up to make these decisions before the school committee has had their chance to do it.
The day before we did.
But they, they hadn't made their decision yet. You did not preempt them at any other point through this, ever. And we had discussions, and I was clear with you at various times, that I didn't think that you guys were dealing with this in the way that you should have, as a board.
That's passed.
But it, but it's significant, and it's important, because now, all of the sudden, you're making this decision before the school committee had a chance to make the decision.
Keep in mind.
So. Why was the school committee not allowed to make this decision?
They, they, we, as this Board of Health, are making a recommendation that masks should be worn and are mandated.
No, you're, you made a decision that they are mandatory. There's nothing about recommending anything.
Correct.
You made a decision that they're mandatory. Those decisions, in the last year and a half, were based on metrics. This is not based on metrics. And so this is a huge shift in how the town has been handling this. It doesn't matter to me what other jurisdictions are doing.
Of course not, no.
Well, you said it should matter. It doesn't matter to me. It doesn't matter to me what our surrounding communities are doing, or anyone else. So, and I, I do feel like this was, was manipulative. It was just a decision about the schools. If this was about children, it didn't spill over to daycares. It didn't spill over to the summer camps that were in session at the time, that at times were held inside buildings. I, I guess I'm, I, so I am very concerned. There's obviously, look, obviously, I have three kids. We, we take the health and safety of our kids very seriously. We have throughout this entire thing, okay? When the metrics demanded that we take, we, we either go remote, or we do all of these things, no argument from me. But, and I, you know, you may have had a lot of people at that meeting. I have yet to have one person reach out to me. Most people are now really upset the other direction, because anybody who wants to wear a mask can wear a mask. I mean, there's no saying that you can't. This has been, I can tell you, I'm one of the few people, and no one on the Board of Health, and no one on the Select Board, has a kid in the schools. This is not easy to attend school wearing a mask. And my daughter's older. I can't imagine, for the elementary school kids, the position that this puts them in. I think it's very serious, and it should be part of the consideration. And these decisions should be based on metrics. And part of the problem, and it's going to open up another discussion, and that's about our COVID coordinator. I don't know what our metrics are. We're not getting any information. I am not even sure what our COVID coordinator is doing, if anything.
May I address that?
Sure.
Thank you. There are no metrics, because the current Delta variant is a totally new virus. All the metrics that were based on the old COVID.
But we, we need.
I'm speaking, thank you. All of the metrics were based on the original virus. The new Delta variant is far more virulent. It's far more infective. It affects younger children far more than the original old one.
But COVID testing is COVID testing. We're testing zero. We're testing zero, that's zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is good.
It's great. And there should be a reward for that.
Yeah.
Bob?
Yeah.
Right? Hatfield has a high vaccination rate. I can tell you, my daughter, who's at the high school, all of the kids she knows are all vaccinated.
Mm-hmm.
High vaccination rates here.
We're talking about the young.
I understand we're talking about it, but we're still talking about numbers.
Yeah.
So.
And just to address what Danielle said and what you had said, you know, the school board met the day before we did, no decision was made. We met, it was on our agenda to discuss.
I mean, usually someone puts it on an agenda or requests it to be on an agenda.
Yeah.
You, I assume, as the chair, sets the agenda. And you don't know how it got there.
And we had a good turnout.
But you don't know how it got there.
Well, I do, I do. It was a number of the school nurse, the school administrators.
Why would those individuals not wait for the school committee?
Right.
Well, I will say.
The school committee people were there.
Not all of them.
Not all of them. Well, they were invited. If they didn't show up, and we didn't hear any negative, any of this negative opinion during that meeting. If they wanted, if there were concerns about it, why were they not there?
I did get an email from the chairman of the school committee saying, or asking, who is the COVID liaison person? And so that might have, I don't remember, vice specifically said, Bob, we need to put on our agenda.
Yeah.
So that might have been come from me.
Yeah.
So let's talk about the COVID coordinator. Because that is partly, part of this discussion, because we don't, the metrics matter. So let's talk about the COVID coordinator. What is the COVID coordinator doing on a daily basis? Because she's being paid still. What is she doing? How often is she monitoring Maven? How are things going with contact tracing? And why are we not getting, I have no, we have no communication with her. We used to get communication from her, we get nothing, and nothing from you guys, in other words, forwarded. So I really have my doubts about what our coordinator's doing at this time.
Okay, well, as far as the coordinator, the term COVID coordinator is kind of a secondary term now. We have a Maven monitor who, her job is to monitor the Maven system, and usually that's three times a week, looking for any new cases, be it COVID, but also for other reportable diseases that we have to monitor as a local Board of Health. That would be tick-borne diseases.
Right, I understand. I understand all that, so.
So COVID is only one of those diseases that we have to monitor.
But if it's serious enough for us to be masking our children, why is that not being checked every single day? Probably because there's no cases on it.
No, sorry. There's no what?
Cases. She's not finding, generally speaking.
Yeah, and also, as far as the monitoring of and tracing of cases, that would be picked up with the positive cases. So that is a separate duty beyond the Maven monitor, who happens to be the same person. It makes sense to have the same person that's checking Maven. If there's a positive COVID case, she would then do the tracing.
What does she, what does she, how many hours a week is she being paid?
For the monitoring of the Maven, it's two hours per week. And any additional tracing would be additional time. That's totally unpredictable because it doesn't.
So that's just, that's variable. The tracing hours are variable.
Absolutely. And, you know, we haven't had any this past week. She didn't do any tracing, she doesn't get paid. But if.
I don't think three times a week is enough.
Well, I would say as we enter school, it definitely should be daily.
Correct, yeah.
You know, we don't get any kind of report.
And again, if there are no COVID.
But maybe it's important for townspeople to hear, there are zero cases this week. There are zero cases this week, or one, or two, or whatever it is. You know, we had that instituted, and I know Bob, Bob was doing that every week, sending out the call. Townspeople, I think, really liked getting that call. And, so I don't see how we can be not communicating with our townspeople about these things, not monitoring Maven every day. So it's not even important enough to monitor Maven every day, and yet we're going to mask our children. Do you see why I think that's just completely inconsistent?
Of course, yeah, I see the reasoning.
And I think that the decision of the board is completely inconsistent with what has been happening for the last 18 months. And that's concerning to me.
Well, I think.
Well, you brought up the history of COVID coordinator and our board. I wasn't on the board when the COVID coordinator started or anything, but the way, you know, we were getting emails from people that, you know, they go into business, they're unmasked, and then, you know, Carrie would get some, and Bob, we all did, and it's like, well, who's going to take care of it? So it got confusing. So then it was decided, not by our board, that Carrie or the COVID coordinator would take care of it all. And if there was issues, after we repeat issues with businesses or whatever, we would go and take care of it. So that's how we got uninvolved because the COVID coordinator decided along, and I don't know if we.
Well, it wasn't, yes, but she still wasn't, the COVID coordinator was not authorized to make decisions on behalf of the Board of Health. The Board of Health just sort of chose to take a backseat to some.
Well, she was making decisions.
She was coming forward with the information, and Carrie's here tonight. Carrie, I appreciate you being here. I personally felt a lot better when Carrie was our COVID coordinator. And I've heard from a lot of townspeople that they felt better when Carrie was the COVID coordinator.
Are you suggesting that we?
Bring her back?
Bring her back.
Yep.
Or change her?
Yes.
Change COVID.
If she would do it.
Okay, that's your opinion, okay. From our perspective, you know, if you think that, if you or the rest of the townspeople think that it's important to have those weekly blurbs about there were no COVID cases.
I think that we, I think that it was, it was kind of a good feeling, Bob, when we didn't have to have them.
Right.
Because we had come out of what seemed like the worst period of this.
Yes.
But I think, I don't think we can have it both ways. If you're not going to report to townspeople what's happening with COVID, it seems odd to be instituting, you know, pretty serious mandates on small children. So I, we have, we have to sort of figure out what the best way to move forward is here. I don't think that instituting this mandate was the thing to do. I think that leaving it up as a personal choice to parents, I mean, certainly parents who have a reason to feel like their child is safe or masked.
It's just a pandemic, it's not a personal choice, you know? I mean, if I had a child and, you know, there's a grandmother.
But it's a pandemic now ju, with a ruling just for the schools. Not for anyone else, not for daycares, not for other places children congregate.
Yeah, because schools are starting. I mean, to be perfectly honest, I did.
Our decisions, all of our decisions for the last 18 months have been based on metrics.
But again, it's a different virus now.
But it's, you still have to test positive for COVID to have the Delta variant.
But the thing of it is, Diana, we're looking at this, you know, that the kids are being infected, okay? And they have not been in a school setting, you know, and.
Where are, but they're not being infected, we don't have infections here.
Well, right now you don't, but I mean, I don't like playing fire with other people's kids. And that's all it's going to take us, one kid to get infected and die.
Yeah, and, you know, keep in mind, these are recommendations, one, they can change. If we're going through the school year and there are no infections, the school can loosen up those requirements.
But we have, we're starting the school year with infections.
Seriously, I was going to say, wouldn't it be opposite? Right.
Start the school year, let them learn in an environment that it, that they've missed so much, right? Now for almost two years. Let them learn, and you will not hear one argument from me. If we have reason, the metrics, and there was clear, right, definitions Carrie can speak to, what triggered what in terms of metrics, you won't hear one argument from me. But if we're COVID-free in this community and we have high vaccination rates, and I am assuming that our teachers have been responsible enough to be vaccinated, can't we take the approach that, yes, we will, we will do what we have to do should a case arise? But this seems.
But keep in mind, the vaccination rate in the elementary school is zero. None of those kids under 12 have been vaccinated.
Understood. Understood, but there's, I mean, there's.
That's the high risk.
Right. And I do know that kids can get it, we know that.
And badly.
They are very low risk and it's very uncommon.
Very bad illness. And, you know.
But so if you, so if you look at it that way, does that, does it never end, Bob? So if you look at it that we have zero cases, kids can always get sick, do you never let the masks come off? Because fall of 2022, we're going to be having the same discussion.
As I just got done saying, Diana, if there are no infections, when kids are back in school, in close contact, then we can reassess the mask requirement.
I just think that's a backwards way to approach.
You'd rather.
Our, the education of our kids.
Yeah. And also, remember, the, as I understand it, it doesn't matter what the Board of Health recommends, it's the school board that ultimately makes those decisions.
So I, what, I was under the impression that the Board of Health decision supersedes the school committee decisions.
I think so.
I was just at the.
You mandated it. You made, you mandated it. After not doing those things. For the, when we had big cases, you guys weren't doing this stuff. Now we have zero and you are.
But keep in mind, when you have big cases.
I'll just explain why we were not involved.
Yeah.
It's, well, that might be why, but that didn't stop you from being involved, Liz. We talked about this through this, through this.
Yeah, and when you have large cases in a expanding pandemic, you have large numbers that you can actually get metrics on. When you have smaller numbers, those numbers aren't relative significant, aren't.
What do you mean? Because we're a small town?
No, 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 no. When you have smaller numbers. When you have large numbers of cases, let's say you have, you know, larger volumes of illness, you can get more accurate numbers. But when you have one case last week and none for the next two weeks, you can't really establish metrics.
What, I don't understand that. If there's, the numbers are the numbers. We either have cases or we don't.
Right, yeah. But I'm saying, you know, we can establish whatever.
I mean, if it's, do you see my point? That if it's this serious, why are we not monitoring Maven every single day?
Well, I don't have any reason other than the fact that there aren't that many cases right now where it would warrant the cost. Right now, we would, that means that the town would have to come up with more money to pay the person that we have monitoring Maven.
You mean, in two hours, you can't just log on to see if there's a case? In, over the course of five days? So that's 20 minutes?
Well, there's seven days a week, things happen on weekends, too.
Okay, seven days. I mean, how long does it take to log on to Maven and say, oh, no cases?
Maybe she does, I don't know, sure, maybe she just checks it quick, I don't really know.
But.
But I will say this, I went to a school committee policy committee meeting right before I came here, and we talked about different things, and masking and stuff, and, you know, I can't really say what was discussed because it's, that stuff wasn't brought to the school committee, the whole school committee, and hasn't been brought to us. But we did make some, I think, some compromising recommendations.
I, I'm just going to go on the record once again, and COVID has just been difficult for all of us, right? The whole world. We've been pretty fortunate here in Hatfield, not going to. I do agree with, with Diana, and it's not just Diana, it's if we're going to follow the science, then the science says there's no cases in Hatfield, there's no reason to mandate masks. If parents want their kids to wear masks, want their children to wear masks, I get it, that, wear masks. I mean, we all see people driving in their car by themselves with a mask on. If that makes them feel comfortable, God bless them, right? But if the science isn't saying if you're in your car by yourself, you need to wear a mask, right? So, so I think what we're trying to say is, after a year of masks for these children, to have another year of starting school with masks, when the science today, you know, who knows what tomorrow brings? The science today does not, in my opinion, warrant that because there's no cases. I don't know how, I don't know why we're mandating it.
Strongly recommending it is fine.
Absolutely. And I think.
My opinion, I mean.
See, my, my, I guess just my total thing is like, because we haven't had kids in school five days a week in big classes. I, to me, would rather be proactive about it than reactive, than, you know, let's evaluate in a month. And, you know, having people, you know, and I'm all for having parents decide things, but this is a public health thing. It's like, this kid's going to wear one, this kid's not, and if they're exposed, you know, that's what worries me.
Well, if they're, that's the point. If they're wearing, if one chooses to wear a mask, then that limits their exposure. I mean.
Yeah, but that's just one.
But we, I just think these decisions should be based on actual facts and the metrics. And right now, it just doesn't.
Well, I think if you look at, you know, the CDC, you know, you know, doctors, you know, Dr. Fauci and a lot of the other experts, you know, they're saying, wear masks. I mean, it's not, a mask is not going to kill a kid, but COVID, well, long story short.
You're making it sound like it's definite, I mean, some of this is really.
Well, I've worked in, in, you know, healthcare for long enough to see a child on a ventilator.
No one wants to see that.
No.
Bob, did you have something?
So I, I'm going to be the mixed person here, so, because I'm kind of a stickler for things. I feel like we're getting off topic. We, we definitely needed to discuss the schools, but the Board of Health can't change their vote from Thursday. They're not in a post-it meeting.
Right.
So that recommendation, if it needs to get changed, or if the school committee chooses to revisit it on Tuesday, I think that is their choice. I definitely think that there's some more conversation. It sounds like the policy committee did speak, and maybe they came up with some compromises. I think the agenda item is for municipal buildings.
Yes.
As of tonight, and I know everybody has their, their opinions. I can say, as the person who is the EMD and the person who is directly dealing with COVID patients in town, because I transport them, I ended up with nobody from the ambulance department contracting COVID last year. We put the things in place. I think it is a town decision. My opinion is, is that we do not mandate it. I think the, the CDC is recommending masks if you are in a high transmission area, not mandating. Desi is also doing the same with the school side of things. They're also saying that vaccinated don't need to be wearing masks if we're indoors. And taking our numbers, three cases in about the last 65 days in the town of Hatfield, that at least I've been notified of, and the dispatch center's been notified of, to me, those are the numbers, that's the science, that's what CDC is saying. That, to me, dictates that we don't mandate it in municipal buildings, we strongly recommend it, we put the signs on the door, CDC recommendation is vaccinated, your choice, unvaccinated.
Put it on, mask on.
Mandatory, absolutely, because that is a thing, even with the fact that we do not have a high transmission rate in Hatfield, and even Hampshire County at this point. We were looking at the numbers earlier, and we are at, I think it's like 1% or whatever it is. Right? So we're, we're considered still low as a county at this point. So, because I know we could talk about it for hours, I don't want to piss anybody off, I just want to get it back to, the, the agenda item was for the municipal buildings.
I just think it should, right, exactly. All of these decisions, in my opinion, should be based on facts and numbers and not fear.
Yeah, and, and again, keep.
Because that fear will never go away, because COVID is never going away. It was here before, it'll be here after.
Yeah, and keep in mind that we have that huge cohort of 12 and under in the schools that are unvaccinated, as Bob mentioned. in the schools that are unvaccinated, as Bob mentioned.
Bob, did you, I'll get back to you here.
Reading some of the things that are coming from either CDC or DPH and across the country, they're finding out now, again, science, is that there is no proof of the Delta variant, because they're only testing a small portion of it. They are also finding, as a lot of these students, as Dr. Rosen found out, that it is more transmissible if they're saying this variant. They are also finding out afterwards that these kids do not have COVID, it is RSV.
Correct.
That is also out there. So, I would say this to anybody-
That's right, that's what I mean when I say, what's the end game? Because RSV will always be around, the flu will always be around, COVID will always be around.
So a lot of these people are getting sick, and it has been shown that the numbers are there, CDC is admitting to this, that some of what they thought was Delta is actually RSV in children.
Right.
And that, that's proof, that that's not anything else. That is what they're putting out. So, we have to look at the whole picture, and it's not just that everything is Delta because they can't prove it. CDC came out in an article and said, we don't even know. We're presuming everything from essentially July 1st through today is Delta. Their, their own article from the CDC came out and said that about a week and a half ago.
Right.
And again, all of those are respiratory viruses, so masks would protect those younger children.
So, so is your end game masks forever? Because there's always going to be respiratory viruses, okay. Carrie?
I just want the opportunity to defend myself since accusations were made against me. I did my job because I was the chair of the Board of Health when this all started. My board members and I worked well together, and I informed them every opportunity I had. And I was not reelected, and I was put into the position from the Select Board. After that, I answered to both boards, and I gave information as needed to both boards. If the Board of Health didn't choose to be at meetings and be involved in other situations, that was on them, that had nothing to do with me. And I never, ever made a decision without making sure that the people who were in charge of me were informed before that decision was made. I was the one who studied and understood COVID through and through because it was thrown in my lap when this happened in Hatfield 18 months ago. So if there's people who are upset with me, that's fine. Somebody else could have had the job at the time. But I at least stepped up and did what I needed to do and what I felt I needed to do as an elected official in this town.
And there were, there were times when I went to school committee meetings where dishes, decisions were being made about COVID-related things, where you were there and there were no Board of Health members there. Just want to point that out. Did anyone else have anything?
I have a question. So was the decision from the Board of Health, is that, is it a mandate? That's like, or is that a recommendation of the school board? I'm just, I'm confused in the discussion. I thought that was-
I'm confused, too, because you kind of said two different things.
I think, you know, with all of this discussion that-
Well, they can't change-
They can't change anything now, if it's-
But I'm curious what it actually-
But the initial, the initial-
It was an order that was voted by the Board of Health.
Was a mandate, is that right?
And, and again, without that feedback that we did not get during our meeting, when we decided, when we made that vote,
So that, so the, so the vote was partially based on feedback at the meeting, which was people's personal feelings, not necessarily the facts and the numbers.
Absolutely.
I mean, and the HTA, so the HTA, I believe, gave a statement supporting a mask mandate. But I, do you know, they did not poll the teachers?
The teachers-
The teachers were not polled, just so you know.
There was a teacher representing us.
I'm sure that there's some teachers who do support it, I know there is. But there are also some that don't, because I've spoken to them.
And again, uh-
It shouldn't be based on how many people came to the meeting to talk about for it or against it. It should be based on the numbers and the best course forward for our students based on the numbers we're seeing and that we've been seeing historically in town.
My vote was not counted. I mean, I took it into consideration. But to be perfectly honest, I went in there thinking and knowing that they should be masked. That was my opinion. So, I mean, I wasn't swayed by the amount of people in the room or the emails.
And again, as Brian mentioned, our vote was taken. If we decide to reassess it, it would require another meeting and further discussion. And again, based on what's, what the recommendations are going on.
And base it on the actual numbers of what's happening here and the actual risk. And then, and, and the, the consideration, the, right, the risks that are involved with masking are children in school, again. Sorry, Megan, you wanted to speak-
Yeah, so I just want, I mean, I'm not even from Hatfield, so I don't, you know, find a lot of people to talk here. But I, I'm trying to fight for every kid and the choice in whatever school district you're part of is to look at the science and research the science. And if you look at the science, if, I mean, you could buy a box of masks that these kids are all wearing, that they're handing out at the school, on the mask box will say, these are not for protection for antiviral stuff. They're telling you on the box, Dr. Fauci was Mr. Mask Man, you know, he'll tell you, these are not protecting you from viruses. So the rate of a child from 0 to 12, yes, there's no vaccine yet for these children. But the percentage of children at that age dying from COVID is .003. More children die in car accidents, drowning, suffocating, smothering, every single day. But you're putting your kids in a swimming pool, you're putting your kids in the backseat of your car. There are countless amounts of special ed children that are suffering that the Board of Health is not taking into consideration. So by, by giving a choice to the parents of what to decide, I mean, I mean, Taunton just, just voted in choice for their school. They have 8,000 children in their school district. 31 school districts in Massachusetts have voted for choice. Our area in Western Mass is, has the lowest COVID rates of the entire state. So when you're thinking of these things, or being manipulated by someone to say, mandate masks or this and that, you need to, if you're going to do that, then you need to, you need to back it up with science. And I'm showing you the science on my side of giving the choice. And if you can't prove to me that what I'm saying is wrong, then you need to, you know, take back your mandate and, and give families the choice. There is enough families on both sides of this where, I mean, I chose to homeschool my son last year because the mask was, it was too difficult for him with his disabilities. The same thing goes for that way. If you don't feel safe with your children not wearing a mask, you can also homeschool your child.
Or have them wear a mask, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So, you got, you know, there's one way or another, and you just, you really have to take all sides and look at the science. And there's plenty of it out there if you look for it and want, if you want to know the truth, there's plenty of science out there telling you, the mask is doing absolutely nothing. If it makes you feel safe, wear it, you know? That's, that's totally your choice.
I don't agree with that statement.
I don't think that's the case. It's not doing anything.
Well, then I'd like to see the science.
Again, the agenda item was more about mandating mask mandates for municipal buildings. This kind of got sidetracked, it took totally in the direction of school, which, again, that decision was made. Now this is kind of being revisited and second-guessed. We're not going to do anything more tonight. So I think, from my perspective, that we're not benefiting-
So to revisit the municipal buildings, I mean, I don't think the metrics are there.
Same arguments, although I know you said that. And, and, you know, it's the same things that are being said over and over again this evening. So what's the point in continuing to rehash it? We, as a board, will revisit it because we still have to revisit our thoughts on municipal buildings, which is part of this agenda item. Businesses, we have to reassess. So, at the same time-
And I, it would be my same input on that, that-
Right.
Make the decisions based on what's actually happening in town.
Correct, yeah.
I, I think Bob, Bob did mention it. But I think it's, as we were coming out of the first wave of COVID, that's exactly what businesses and buildings said was, if you're unvaccinated, come on in. If you're not vaccinated, wear a mask. I mean, you know, there's got to be some self-responsibility for people-
That's part of our future discussion.
Yeah.
Not for, you know, a Select Board meeting.
No, understood.
Understand.
We understand.
But I, I, you know, being that we were part of the whole COVID response, I think that our input is warranted. And then I would like to revisit the COVID coordinator position. I think, you know, I would, I made it very clear how I felt when Carrie left. Very clear. I am not really happy with the work of the current COVID coordinator. And I would like consideration to bringing Carrie back if, if she would come back and do it. Particularly if we're going to be starting to talk about things like masks and-
And I think besides the monitoring of Maven, there certainly was the advantage to Hatfield townspeople knowing it was somebody from Hatfield that was, you know, with a background that was, was doing that thing. So it's not all about-
A lot of people were very sad to see Carrie go from that position.
People got used to it and familiar with it, and she did a great job, so.
Very good job.
They were tough shoes to fill, but certainly, I think, being the home, the hometown girl made people feel comfortable, so.
And believe me, I really commend Carrie.
No, you've always been a proponent and, and positive comments, Bob. Absolutely, double board has been.
I would really like to consider that. I think that that needs to be a very serious consideration. I would even, I would suggest that the Board of Health maybe post another meeting to reconsider this based on numbers, metrics, facts, and to consider a change in the COVID coordinator position. Because that's now under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health, not us, is that correct?
That's correct.
We'll take that under consideration.
I would appreciate that.
As a separate board, yeah. All right, anything else?
No.
I think we've hit it quite soundly.
Thanks, Bob, thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? And maybe Chief Flaherty could just confirm. Does the COVID coordinator update our emergency responders, police chief, fire chief on a weekly basis via email or just a quick call to them?
I was not, I'll be honest. The, the three cases in the last 65 days, I was finding out most of them two days before the person was coming off the tap. And that's when I went to the dispatch.
See, I think it's important that our emergency responders-
Absolutely, yes.
Have that information.
Not weekly, it should be the day a case is identified. So that's why I'm saying Maven should be checked every single day. So that if, if I test positive, they are immediately telling, you know, Bob and his department that if they get a call to my house, they need to know that. They, they shouldn't find that out two days after they respond to a call.
Absolutely, as soon as the coordinator is aware, the emergency responders should be notified.
I mean, when Carrie was doing this, that was happening constantly in real time.
And at all times, the mechanism was really geared for a quick response. Now, as I understand it, even some of those reports are coming in, the results are coming in later, and not getting in the Maven system as quickly as they had been. But no, I, I will make sure-
Maven's only as good as the information being-
That goes into Maven, people should know.
Right, that's true.
And if it's such a critical, dire thing, then I can't understand why things aren't getting into Maven right away. That doesn't make sense.
The cases that we had last week were, ended up not being Hatfield cases.
Right.
It was from Sunderland, but it was reported on the Hatfield system. So I think the reporting system isn't as accurate and fast and efficient as it had been when the state was funding it more robustly. Now, it's, it almost is haphazard, you get the feeling.
Even more reason, I think, for our monitoring of it to be more on the ball.
And again, if we want to monitor the Maven on a daily basis, that will cost more. We'll have to discuss the cost of that.
Well, it seems like for, in two hours, to log on? I mean, I can't imagine logging on is a process that takes more than a couple of minutes.
Contact tracing.
Well, but if you, if you log on and there's no cases, there's no contact tracing.
Right.
So I would say, over the span of a week, in two hours, you could log on to something. I mean, I log on to things all day, every day. Takes me minutes. So if I log on and it shows there's something, then there's something, and those extra hours will kick in. If there's not, then they log out.
I'm, I'm not that familiar with the system, or I could say it's that easy as logging on to your email.
Well, I would assume you log on and it shows you who's reporting in your jurisdiction.
Yeah, and it is not just COVID.
I understand it's not just COVID, but for the purposes of this person, they're looking at the COVID. Right, they're not, we have someone else who's tracking West Nile, which is, is a, which is a concern right now in our area, but we're not telling our kids not to play outside. So I'm just saying that it seems to me, in two hours of pay, you can log on to something every single day. Especially if then the further contact tracing is compensated extra.
I would, I would think, short term, before your meeting, you could just ask her to check it more often. Even if it's to send something out to Bob or Marlene or us or whatever.
Or give serious consideration.
Zero, just to know, so that way we know, okay, it's been, it's been checked. Zero cases, zero cases.
And you know what? Again, I, I really feel strongly that if we're going to start instituting these mandates and going, going back to these different restrictions, then townspeople should get a report every week. So I would really consider bringing, bringing Carrie back. Yeah, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Good wishes for quick healing, Bob.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, geez. Good luck.
Sorry to hear that, Bob.
Hope you feel better. Okay, so that was our last agenda item, but you-
I did have something under old business that I wanted to address. Basically has to do with our last Selectman's meeting, Madam Chair. And I thought that there was a heavy discussion going on in the middle of that. And I thought perhaps townspeople might be interested as to how that, how that played out since then. So, I thought it was important to address the heated conversation from our last meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer's Office in case townspeople are wondering or curious what the outcome was. Since that Selectman's meeting, the Town Treasurer, Town Accountant, an independent auditor, the Town Administrator and I met to discuss the method and procedures for the processing of and the accounting for those employees approved for use of a town vehicle for commuting, and the IRS method of computing the taxation of that fringe benefit. It has been worked out, and everyone is on board. Ultimately, the process is the most common, used by other cities and towns in the Commonwealth, and the one the Board of Selectmen was suggesting in the first place. I also want people, excuse me, I also want townspeople to understand that this board would never, ever do anything inappropriate nor ask any of our employees to do anything that was not above board in the duties of their job. That's just not who we are as a board or as individuals. I was both dismayed and disappointed with some of the comments that were directed at the Board of Selectmen from that office. And the insinuations towards us simply are not true. And quite honestly, I took offense to them, hence my raised voice with those individuals. But here we are, three weeks later, ready to move on together on behalf of our town and our employees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for following up on that matter and seeing that through. It was, it's good to have it behind us.
Yes.
Anything further? Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any fir-, oh, no. Don't you dare.
Bob, funny guy.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.